Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Banter.
Here.
Alderman Roger Griffin.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Hinchem.
Here.
Thank you. Item 3 is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was September the 8th, 2015. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I shall move that we approve.
We have a second?
No second.
Any discussion? All votes in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Employee of the Month.
Mayor, I think Chief Regan will be addressing that this month.
I usually try to go fast and I still try to go a little fast, but a couple things I want to say. One is, I wish we had more people to see that Eric and Blaine are going to be employees over the month. Usually it's not good when there's a lot of people because there's so much controversy. But this time, we began our EMR program, our Emergency Responder Program, in October of last year. And the way it's designed, we're only designed to run when it's a life-threatening incident or when First Call EMS is down to level zero, which means they don't have any ambulance if they can send right at the minute. But they always send an ambulance with us as soon as they get one. We don't respond without an ambulance. Labor Day night, there was a man stopped at Station 2, obviously a car, and ran in and got the attention of Captain Eric Earnon and Blaine Harson, labor station owner. Earnon said, "My wife's unresponsive. She's not breathing or anything in my car." So Eric and Blaine did what they would normally do anyway, because they're emergency responders. They went and got the AED defibrillator off the fire truck, went outside to take care of the situation as best they could. They did administer, what, two shots? Two shots to the lady and then started doing CPR. And all this time, somebody else, I was Blaine, called the ambulance to make sure the ambulance on the lady. And they called Station 1 to have those guys come and help. When those guys came to help, one of them actually dove in the ambulance with the paramedic and was doing CPR on the way to the hospital. The lady survived. The lady was completely unresponsive when they first got to her. She's surviving and as to my knowledge, she's still surviving right now. She's got a little life today. But the significance is, this is the first life we know that we've made a big, big difference in. We know we've made some differences, but we feel like we've made a great big difference this time in this lady's life. And we appreciate that that husband trusted us with her life. You know, Chief Schultz's men, they run into the same issues a lot. When I told Eric and Blaine, we always try to surprise our employees when this happens. This time I said, "Guys, you have to be at the meeting because you're employees of the month." They both were like, "We're just doing our job." Yes, they were just doing their job. But this is something, this is a new program. It has been a little bit of controversy and should we, should we not do it? But this is a benefit of why we believe that we should do it. Before I had them come up here, I do want to say though, James has been very, very supportive in this program. He's given us an opportunity to help the citizens and the visitors here a little bit more. First Call, we have a signed contract with First Call. How we do this, how we go about the whole job. First Call has lived up to every single piece of their part of that contract. And so it's just, so far, everything has worked, for the most part, exactly like we envisioned it. And we, meaning James, our department, First Call, it's just so far, we feel like it's been successful. Eric Blaine, can we each clap? I don't know, but we usually do this for one employee, but as I said last time, what we do is usually a team. So this was part of that team that night.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys. Mike, I want to say something. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Just take a second. A while back, several people questioned me about some things, about what you all do. I went and talked to James and I talked to Randy, Mr. Regan there, and he went over a lot of things and explained to me. And I had a lot of different attitude. I didn't have a bad attitude to start with, but I had a whole lot of different attitude because now I could talk authentically to people that had those questions. I went back to them and explained to them. When we sit down and have a talk, people don't realize what you all do, the lives you may save or whatever. And you gave them, not having to be the first responsible, you can usually get there before the ambulance can. And I just wanted to tell you this has made a big difference. And another thing I'd like to mention, Maurice Schultz here, I was in town not long ago when there was a lady, I thought she was fussing with her kid. She's sitting there beating on the windows and the doors and stuff. I kept thinking that kid in there pitched in a fit, but that wasn't what it is. It was locked, her kid in the car and it was hot. And it was a situation that could have got real hurt. She didn't know what to do. She was trying to cower to somebody. And I called up the police department, but then probably 35 seconds to a minute, they rolled there and I could see the little kid in the car trying to get to the, unlock the door, but he couldn't reach it because he was strapped up in his car seat in the middle where he was supposed to be in. But I just wanted to make the comment, people don't realize sometimes how much that our police and fire and all the other people in the city and everybody does for people. I just wanted to tell you all, thank you a bunch, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you.
James, report.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, just want to get some clarity on for everybody, you all and the media and everybody that's in attendance. You know, we constantly get requests to come on property and try to address issues that homeowners have, renters have, whatever. And the two and a half years I've been down here, I've tried every way I can to stay within the law and still try to help people. And we had an incident, well, we have right now, where a lady has a tree that's about to fall, in my opinion. It grew bad and it's gotten really big and it's about to collapse under its own weight. And I went up and looked at it. Mark went with me. Ben and I looked at it, trying to figure, well, you know, what could we do? But I wanted to be on the safe side, so I had Gary to research and make sure that we were going to be within the law if we went up there and helped her with that tree. And what we have discovered is, I knew you couldn't make capital improvements, and to me, that's going in and digging a ditch and or putting in a retaining wall or, you know, expend a tier of materials. But what we have found is that we cannot, we can't remove the tree. Basically, you can't go on the property and do anything. The only way we could remove the tree would be if it was storm damage, like during, you know, where you had a tornado come through or that sort of thing, then we can go on there and remove the tree. And so I just wanted to get the word out there for you all, because I know you all get hit with this a lot. I know you do. And I do, and the city employees do. And I just wanted to give you, you know, what I had found is that basically, we cannot go on the property and do anything once we get off the right of way. Now, in the budget, we appropriated $10,000 in the budget to try to, a new program that's never been done, and it's a grant program. And where homeowners can come and apply for like $500, up to $500, to try to come in and do these kinds of things. We don't have it all in place. Gary and I have been working on it a little bit. Sherri Butler was very helpful in working on it. And basically, we're going to have, we're going to follow the same guidelines as it does for tax relief. If you, you know, you have to qualify for one of these grants, you'd have to, it'd be like the same criteria that allows you to apply, to qualify for that. And that's the only way we can do it and kind of keep that legal. But that will go into effect the first of the year. We hope, that was our plan all along, was to have that up and running the first of the year, to give that a try. And hopefully, we can use this money to help people address some of these kinds of issues. But I, you know, because I know y'all have called me, several of you have at times, you know, saying that these kind of things have been reported to you, and I just wanted to give you, you know, give you a report on where we are on that. So, you know, and I hate that we can't do more. I like trying to help these people, but we've got to stay legal. And that's what I, anytime they call and ask for these kinds of things, that's what I always tell them. And if I've already approached it once in the past, I tell them, you know, "Look, I got into that once before and we can't do that." But we really can't do anything on private property. I mean, I think that's kind of sad in a way, you know, just like this lady kept saying, you know, "I pay all kinds of taxes and y'all can't do anything for me." And it's not a, and that's why I wanted to get it into the media too, because it's not that we don't want to help them, it's just that we can't, you know, we just can't do The next thing, the taxes. The tax notices should be going out in the next few days, a week or so. Of course, October 1st is the tax season begins, but we can't start receiving them until the notices go out, and they will be going out shortly. One thing that you all had brought up, and I started to put this on the agenda, but I didn't, I don't know that it has to be, I don't know if Terry would know more. Y'all had talked about last year, especially during the budget process, there was a lot of talk about, could we take payments on taxes? And the answer is yes, we can. But we, they have to be paid in full by the end of tax season, which is the end of February. And so we are prepared to do that. Like I said, I started to put it on the agenda for y'all to vote on. I don't know, I think it would be more comfortable if y'all voted on it maybe, but it doesn't have to be voted on. It's up to you all, if you all want to put it on the agenda and vote on it, or just say, "Yeah, we're glad, go ahead and do it." I mean, I don't think it, like I say, Terry could tell for sure, but I don't know that it would have to be, I don't think it would have to be.
Terry, can we make a motion? Somebody just make a motion and let's vote on it tonight without it being on the agenda?
Well, the better, we absolutely could, and that'd be a good idea if y'all, if that's what you want to do. I would suggest we put it on the agenda by waiving the rules. Yes, somebody, somebody would need to make a motion.
Yeah, see, we're already into October, and what I was thinking, we could start doing it now, if we could go ahead and make a motion and that was agreeable.
What's your criteria? I mean, $5 a time, $100 a time is a minimum or?
This is paid at the end of the time.
Yeah.
This has never been done, that I know of, here at Newport. Our system has the capability. I have contacted local government already, waiting for them to call me back to make sure we can go over every step that we need to take in the process. And as far as I understand, because I have spoken to them before, although it's been a little bit, our system should be ready to go. But as far as limits, how you want to split that up, I mean, if you want to leave it open?
I think you might, yeah, I've come in, I've talked to Rob Mathis over there, you know, where they do taking the credit cards and stuff. And he said that when it comes down to it, that very few people want to do that. I mean, you know, you hear this talk, but he said there's very few do it because the extra cost goes to them, you know.
Yeah, if we ever got to that point here, it'd be the same way. Right now, our system won't support a credit card. We can take payments, but we can't do a credit card with a, with a system.
It'd cost the city money by taking credit cards.
Well, and it gets passed on to them, you know. Our cost gets passed on, like Mike or Mr. Profit said.
But he said very few people.
Yeah, that's what he, I talked to him about. He told me the same thing.
I don't want to overput it when that was brought up.
But this is just about partial payments. As far as the limit, if you all want to set, like you got to pay 10%, 25%, I mean, it's up to y'all there. I mean, we were just, we were just going to make it.
He said it just got to be paid by the end of the time.
Yes, that was all, only thing, yes, that'd be, it would absolutely be by the end of February. If not, any due balance would be turned over with penalty and interest, just like it would be if none had been paid.
I think we need some guidelines. Paul, I think we need some guidelines on it for them today.
I just, I just do, I just don't, I'm just trying to think of the work on their end. They're going to be lined up, bringing $5 a time. I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm.
Why don't you all sort of think to me, why don't y'all do a little research on it and sort of give something for a minimum payment that I think, not that I think, but maybe think that a minimum payment, because you can't go with this $5 or $10 away. But you all sort of find out from other towns, maybe how they do their, what minimum payment you can start with and what, because it's still got to be paid at the end of the time anyway, no matter how, but they ought to be at minimum. Minimum.
Did I hear you say nobody else knows this?
Well, we've never, it's never been done here.
Never been here.
There's other places to do it.
But, yeah, I don't know, if we do this, want to make sure whether or not, because I'm assuming that you would not want to be sending out additional invoices every month. You get your one statement and you have to keep up, I mean, our system will keep up with the payments you make, but you still would have, the person would have to keep up with their receipts as well, so.
Yeah, we couldn't jock them.
I just want to keep it light there for you.
Look at it, think about a minimum payment though, you know, that gives you a pretty good idea, because not nicking them down, but enough that, well, they've got a chance to pay the rest of it.
Well, if somebody owes $3,000 versus somebody owes $295, I mean, that minimum payment needs to be, it's all relative, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
At four percent.
Yeah, well, I've seen it. Yeah, I think you make it a percentage.
Yeah. Make it work.
Well, you all expressed that you would like to see that happen.
Yeah, I think we're all agreeable with that.
I mean, this is a tough.
Would you like to have guidelines though? I mean, is that?
Well, we only got October, November, December, January, February, five months, right? And so, you know, if we lose one of our months, we wait for the next meeting.
Well, we could go ahead and approve to waive the rule, put it on the agenda to vote to allow them to do it, then next month you could approve the plan.
That'd be, hey, well, y'all have more information, a good topic to have.
If you want to put it on the agenda tonight, we need to vote first to waive the rules.
I'd like to make a motion to exercise the waive the rules to put this on the document.
Okay. Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? That'll be the last item on your agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. The last thing I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Gary Carver here in just a moment, but just to set it up for you. Another issue that's been a big thorn ever since I've been down here, and I know was for you guys during the election and has been since you've been in office, is blighted properties. And so since Gary's been in office, we've been working on a plan to deal with that. Now, one of the things that we want to do, and again, I'm going to turn it over to him, but we want to let the, like, let the public have some input, and we're putting systems in place that will allow people to report blighted properties. We're going to set something up online, we're going to have a forum and all that, but I'll let Gary, I'll let Gary get into that.
Are we good over here, Rocky? Are we good over here? What James said is, we want to get as much information as possible and then present you guys with a plan of action, an initiative, something like that. We can really have a process, start to finish, when we go and we look at issuing citations for properties that are dilapidated, houses that are rundown and nobody's doing anything about it. The first step that we feel like would be the best way to do that is get the public input. So we think that a public forum where citizens are allowed to come in and express their concerns and most importantly, give ideas. We, of course, don't want it to turn into just a gripe session about their neighbor and how they don't mow their yard. We want more proactive, we want more ideas and suggestions that we can get than, than the gripe session. So if it's to, we would conduct the meeting, you guys wouldn't be asked to be there. That would put you in a corner to answer questions personally and politically, and that would have you, we wouldn't want to do that to you. So we would conduct it, you all be, of course, welcome as private citizens to make suggestions or give ideas. But we just want to know if, if you guys are comfortable with that moving forward, and then once we do that, hopefully by the next meeting, we could give, if not an outline, maybe a full-blown plan on how to really confront this going forward, if that's okay.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Would the end of, and the sooner the better, as far as I feel like so, would the end of this month, early next month, be okay with you guys?
Yeah.
We'd share the 27th with Planning Commission, but they would have to be in the afternoon to give the public an opportunity to get here if they, if they work eight to five like we do. Or you're looking at the 3rd of November or the 17th of November to not conflict with city council.
I'll do it the 3rd. October for me, sooner the better. We've got buildings downtown here that bricks are falling off of.
Yes, sir.
And others, you know, it's not only blighted property, it's dangerous.
I also feel like, I know Mark, and I guess you're helping him, I don't know who's doing what, but I know y'all are stepping on some toes now because people are beginning to stir this a little bit. I can see an effort on cleaning up a lot of these properties that people hadn't cleaned up. I know we've got a long way to go, but it's been a start though, so somebody, I know, is gathering them on a little bit.
And part of what we want to do, Coach, is present you guys with, say, this is going to be the process. You guys back us on that. So whenever, if we do get confronted about something, we're just saying, "Hey, this is what, this is what the city council thinks," and we think it too, and not deviate from that plan, not, not, you know, somebody thinks we're attacking them personally, no, sir, we're not, no, ma'am, we're not. We're going by our standards of how we do this.
You know, a lot of people want their property cleaned up, or several do, but they can't find somebody with the equipment. They don't know who would clean their property up, you know.
And we're hoping too, part of this is, we can develop, I call it a safety net, for an elderly person that can't mow their yard or can't afford to have it. We've got dozens of people around here that run their own landscaping business. If everybody donated one yard to us to help out people in those situations, you, we would...
I must have several trying to help people, but.
Yeah, I'm sure you know how that is.
By the time they get to our stage, it's bushhawing, it's not mowing.
Yeah.
I tell you, there's a number of churches that have groups that will do that for people also. They could be a big help for you.
But we want to get a lot of feedback from the citizens. That's what the public forum would be about, and then we'll go forward from that. So if I, if I set it at November 3rd, that first Tuesday in November, does anybody have an immediate conflict with that? Sir? Basketball season.
Did you say you wanted us there or you didn't want us there?
No, you're welcome to come. You're not, you're not required to. You wouldn't sit up here as part of the...
I may or may not be able to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll record it and do a full report for you guys, absolutely.
Okay.
Don't hold up the train for me.
Do you guys have any other questions about it?
No, we just need to put teeth in what we need.
Yes, sir.
Sounds great.
We just wanted to get it set so you all would have the opportunity to come and watch and if you wanted to. That's why we wanted to address it to you all, not just doing it. We wanted to make, you know, we want to let you know what we're doing, but we also wanted to make it good for you all.
We don't have any, we don't have any requirement that would require a new code or anything, right? So.
Oh, five, yeah. Do we just want to say 5:45 like a regular council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have sufficient coding zones, zoning in place that would cover us on that.
Well, we're evaluating that. That's another thing that Gary's working on. He's looking at what some of the surrounding towns are doing. He's consulting with M-Pass, getting their input, and we're, you know, we're going to look at what options are out there and if there are some that we're not currently taking advantage of. I've always felt like there's something out there we're missing, but when I met with Dan Hawke, our state planner, he assured me we were doing pretty much all we could do, but with all due respect to him, we're going to do our own research on that. That's all I got.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Item 7, any report from the Tanner Preservation Alliance? Okay, item 8, under old business, the consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2015-10, amend the municipal offenses to add panhandling restrictions for the city of Newport. We got a code you need to read, Terry.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'll read that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2015-10, an ordinance to amend municipal offenses in the city of Newport and add panhandling restrictions for the city of Newport, Tennessee. And this would be the second reading.
We have a motion to approve.
Shall we move?
I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Moving on to item 9, new business. Item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance 2015-11, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, into the record, that is ordinance number 2015-11, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016, first reading.
We have a motion to approve the first reading.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
What are we doing, Tina?
The first section is to put in some dollars for the Civil Service Board Secretary. Then we have the adjustments to amend salary sections, including benefits, for the new contract that Connie got with James. The next one, capital lease revenues and expenditures, they net to zero. It's an accounting entry to record the increase because we're going with an additional vehicle that you agreed to for the police department on theirs. And then the capital lease patrol car for $9,400, that's the actual payment increase for this current budget year. The sale of equipment is to record where the road grader was sold. Then we have another sale of equipment, $11,400, that's the backhoe that was traded in. These are basically net zero entries that are required for accounting. Then we're going to fund the, oh, and then we have the janitor position that the board agreed to in a prior meeting, so we're going to fund that. Items that don't net to zero are going to be taken from the sales tax revenue. That's all in the general fund. And in the capital fund, it's a net zero, basically for accounting procedures you need to record correctly. Again, the backhoe and the road grader that was sold.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Appreciate the job you're doing, Tina, keeping us informed on the things you're exchanging, but everybody, now it's been nice to be here.
Okay, we've got, had a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2015-12, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2015-12, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Newport Grammar School.
We have a motion to approve their budget amendment request.
Shall we move?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no? I hear none. Kind of an update on the red light situation. The red light at the Pizza Hut, that was evaluated in 2014. They will not recommend a red light at that location. The red lights study that was requested for Carson Springs Road and 2570 has not been recommended for red lights there. However, in the conversation that I had with Nathan Vatter, with T-Dot, there's two ways of going about a little, somewhat of a solution to that problem. We can get the state involved in widening Carson Springs Road there and go through all that red tape, or the city can have the light poles moved and make a, at their suggestion, might help some there would be to make a right turn lane at that entrance to Carson Springs Road. That, of course, would entail cost for the city to widen that part of Carson Springs Road, which is a city street. And as far as the changing of the road of the Carson Springs Road, the reroute of Carson Springs Road, that was never an issue from T-Dot. That was a, at some point in time, a development. T-Dot, that was a, at some point in time, a developer that was in the process of looking at that property to build some kind of, uh, facility there, was in their plans, so it was private plans to reroute Carson Springs Road and never part of the, uh, state highway department because it's not a state road. It comes on to a state road, but Carson Springs Road is a city street, so that was a developer, uh, however, that got out that was going to do that.
Oh, I thought when, it was my understanding, uh, that when they changed the, uh, left turn, if ever, off of Interstate 40, that they would also change, that it would affect the Carson Springs, uh, road, is that not correct?
No, I thought the same thing, Roger, but it's not, never been a plan of T-Dot to reroute Carson Springs Road, that was a developer's plan that was interested in buying that piece of property between the Comfort Inn and the Exxon. They were going to do that, and then there could have been a traffic light study at that intersection, and possibly one could have went up, you know, uh, and a determination on when the left exit is going to be done is, it's not in the process yet. Uh, the two right, the red lights down here that, that, uh, Nathan is trying to get for, uh, at the bank and the library, uh, is going through the process, uh, that could take place in 2016, pending funding, which is always, uh, an issue on that, and every time we've got those, it's always, anything they do is pending funding, so he's trying to get that through safety money, which, he's done a great job of spending safety money in, in the district that he has, so something that, uh, I, I don't know what you all might want to, to look at, we could possibly look at what the cost would be widening Carson Springs Road to make a right turn, uh, what's your thoughts?
I think we definitely should do that as a minimum, I mean, that's a danger, we've got a tremendous number of people coming through that, I don't know what, I don't know how they came up with a report, maybe they didn't do any study at night, I don't know, but, I mean, you have 6,000 people coming through that, uh...
Yeah. He said we were close. We were close.
Said we were close, but no cigar.
But no cigar. Sorry, Gary, I didn't want to talk about that.
No pun intended.
Yeah, that, that just popped in there.
Mayor, will the state put those cords across the road to count the actual, uh, number of cars and traffic?
They do that, yes, I don't know if they put it across, uh, city or county road.
They didn't put them up there.
Do they bend? Or, does the state put the, the hoses that counts traffic on a non-state road? Okay, so they could do that, and, and I don't know what kind of study they do, whatever their prototype study is of any intersection, but he did say it was close.
They didn't do that at that intersection though, did they bend? At Carson Springs, where it comes on, there was never any on either side, did they put those up? So I don't know what kind of, I don't know where they came up with, we got close, but we didn't get it, but...
They, they usually come out and sit at an intersection, they have a team that comes up, and they sit and count traffic at the intersection now.
But the hours is, you know, really what counts on that particular road.
And he said the, the biggest majority, and it's in that study there, the overwhelming number of vehicles that comes out of our turn right, he said it seems like anybody that's needing to go left is going up to the, the Cleverter Cut Off red light and taking care of their deal, and of course, the, that situation, that mess out there, uh, going into, uh, the new four lane, they'll never fix that until they've got the Blacktop Company up here to do that and the four, the new four lane. It'll all be one process with Blaylock to come in and fix all of that, even though I don't see why they can't go ahead and fix that part and get rid of that congestion, but I won't say what I thought.
They got four projects going on here in Cock County, it seem like they never finish any of them, they'll start it, get to the end of nowhere, stop, and then they'll start somewhere else, looks like they finished that four levees, just sitting there going to run into a bottleneck down there.
Have you ever seen anything that makes sense, don't usually get done?
Well, I do here in my state, we go down there, we've heard last year, we've not got any money, but yet we still have the projects, so we're...
Remember, when we were in Nashville, they, uh, the, uh, I can't remember the group that had done the study, and how many millions of dollars it's cost extra on the way they built 321, by building a section, skipping to another section, because they have to, uh, and Blaylock could probably give you the figures on what it's costing to, uh, the way they've done 321 coming down through there by skipping from going out and doing, uh, Gatlinburg, going up and doing, uh, from the Green County line to Clear Creek, then skipping down and doing Muddy Hollow, and, uh, what was it, something like, I think it was five or six million dollars more that it cost.
They're still wasting it.
Yeah, a million dollars every time they redo that, and, uh, guys, I tell you, we've got to get some help from our representatives.
Roger, I had a talk with the Mayor Gatlinburg again, and he basically said, you know, they are in a, uh, peeing contest with Pigeon Forge and Sevierville, and the people that are winning right now are down at 407 exit, you notice how everything's getting done down there?
Right.
And Gatlinburg and everything else is on the back burner, it's a political thing going on between Pigeon Forge, Sevierville, teaming up against Gatlinburg, and apparently Pigeon Forge and Sevierville's winning, which is affecting Newport. We need from Gatlinburg...
Yeah, we need that, that four lane coming out of Newport on down through Cosby, maybe we ought to sign with Gatlinburg.
He said a thousand times, or they said it's been, it's been brought up a hundred times, that the best way to get to Gatlinburg is to get off here at Newport, and even up towards Cosby, but they're not going to do anything about it.
Yeah, because they've got all the people on, what is it, 160, fighting, uh, putting another road through?
Yes.
That'll come off another exit and take them off of that.
You mean 66?
Uh, 66, I'm sorry, and, uh, but, uh, we, we've got to get some, uh, help out of Nashville because, you know, that road comes to where Pittman Center now, and they've done some of the major cuts that you have to do coming down through there to get out to that Pittman Center, their new building, but we don't have nothing coming down past there. Somebody said it's going to widen, you know, they did a little grading up here on, uh, there's going to take the road on out, uh, from Lowe's on out, uh, I don't know whether that's true or not, the state, when they were over there, they did some cutting, and, uh, but, uh, guys, we have got to get some way, if we have to go down there and protest, then maybe we'll send James, sick James on.
You're talking about the Cosby Highway? The Cosby Highway from Lowe's to Wilton Springs?
Yeah.
Yeah, they moving a lot of dirt on that.
Yeah, but, uh, you know...
But they may get so much moved and then stop, but...
Yeah, I know if they push dirt...
Yeah.
Out there for a month and stop, and then, nothing else has been said about it, and they said it was going on, but, I mean, we need that, where we need that road is from here to Gatlinburg, and we would get a lot, we, that have to come off that exit and get on that road, it'd be much better than, and look at the millions of dollars that they spent at 66, and, uh, I tell you, have y'all been down there and seen that mess? I mean, it's like, it's, it's exits, that's what they did in both places, where they've got to cross company, it looks like some, some of the things they've done in Atlanta, but we have got to get us some help out of the state, and, uh, I don't know what, Marsh Town's getting it, they've got, uh, what's it, green, and, uh, but we need somebody down there that'll yell and scream for Newport, I tell you, we need worse than anybody in this, and, uh, what should we do? Maybe we need to hire us a lobbyist.
Well, anyway, that's my red light report, so...
Anyway.
I'll move on to D, you've got the cell tower restrictions.
Yeah, the cell tower, we'll talk about that, we, you know, we've got two, does everybody know we got two going up? Everybody, for one, 155 feet, the other was 184, out in West End, uh, the feds told the, uh, Planning Commission, we couldn't do anything about it, I don't know why they came to Planning Commission if we couldn't do anything about it, I don't know why the Planning Commission had to take a vote if we couldn't do anything about it. The problem that I found, and, uh, Mark's been a great assistant in the research, and, uh, is that we don't have any zoning on towers, never had any. Now, uh, I talked to M-Pass, our man, Pat...
Pat Hordy.
Yeah, he's, he's had a triple bypass or something, I mean, he's in pretty, uh, bad shape critically, and he's been out, the, uh, but I did get the Marsh Town people to send me a copy of the, uh, zoning, and it's in your book behind, help me, Regina, what is that? It's behind, uh, new business.
New business, last year.
And, uh, but anyway, what I'd like for you to do is take a look at that, wireless telecommunications towers and antennas, uh, a little wordy for my taste, but probably if, uh, our attorney looks over, and I'd like to have this, uh, ready for next month's meeting for us to vote on, uh, putting in place, uh, these zonings, uh, and, uh, because, evidently why we didn't have any, anything that we could do with the federal, uh, FCT, Federal Communication, FCC, Federal Communication Commission, was that, uh, we don't have any zoning. Marsh Town, Greenville, everybody has zoning on this, uh, wireless telecommunications towers and antennas, and, uh, I think, uh, M-Pass passed this around, and did it ever come up before any of the other previous, uh, councils you're aware of?
No, that I'm aware of.
Well, uh, but, uh, US Code has kind of got us in a box, you can look at it, it's in your book, uh, 47 US Code 322, Mobile Services, uh, they got us in a box until we come up with some zoning, and, uh, I tell you guys, those towers aren't going to be pretty sitting behind the Presbyterian Church, I'm sure the Presbyterian Church is going to like to have the money out of it, I sure would, but, uh, if you look at, uh, I can give you a couple pages, if you look at A, State Presentations, and you can flip on over to Preservation and Local Zoning Authority, and, uh, basically it comes down to no state or local government, registered mentality thereof may, uh, regulate the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emission to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulation concerning such. Now, that's what they said, that we couldn't do anything about the placement, but that particular thing, according to the great legal minds I've talked to, says that only applies if we use the reason with the environmental effect of a radio frequency emission, and I think that we could have got that tower, had we had some zoning, uh, stopped. Now, that's two, and I don't think they're going to stop there, because we're close to 40, and, uh, we're at a high level, and, uh, we need to pass a wireless telecommunications tower, and I'd ask you gentlemen to look it over, I ask, uh, our learned attorney to, uh, take a look at it, uh, like I say, M-Pass developed this for the city of Marsh Town, and, uh, they've been very pleased, uh, I think it was about, what, five years ago, they came in there and put a tire up on them and pulled the same trick, so what they did is put zoning, and Marsh Town's got one tower, now, we've already got two, and I'm sure we're going to have more on the way, if we don't do some type of zoning such as this to stop it.
Your graph's not the addition of them, but the placement of them, the location of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
They could put one out here in this front yard.
That's right, if the FCC approved, I mean, they're setting one right behind the Presbyterian Church, they're setting one across the street from Sonic, and I think that's pretty, you know, of all the acreage that's around here and all the high places, and, uh, that's where they end up, and, uh, so, but I think we, uh, we should adopt, uh, make the necessary changes, I don't think there's many to be made, uh, that we could stop, uh, the feds from coming in here and sticking towers everywhere they want to.
So you're on the Planning Commission to look at a, at some codes?
No, I'd like for us to, uh, look at this.
This, this would be a, uh, no, uh, it would be a, a regulation that the city would pass.
Right, right.
A zoning, a zoning regulation.
Right, be a zoning regulation, have, that the Planning Commission would use.
Yes, yes, sir, it would be...
To stop that. Because I was basically told, is that what you understand, right, that the, uh, the fed that came in with them said, there's nothing y'all can do, y'all can say, we're to move it around on this piece of property, behind these places or up there across from Sonic on that acre, but there's nothing that we can do to move it across town or out of town.
Mark, there's a certain amount of height it's got to be before, because these are not got blinking lights on them, or not...
That'd be 200 feet. I think it's 200.
The FCC and, uh, the FAA regulations they have to comply with, but, uh, I don't think I've talked to any federal person, but our state, uh, First Tennessee Development District Advisor that comes to every planning commission, he told us during a meeting that we, uh, could not regulate the location that tower goes, but we can regulate the site plan, and, uh, let me see, uh, I talked with, uh, M-Pass about it as well, and they were supposed to get this information, but, uh, just went through the, uh, 1,000 emails, and haven't seen any reply from them.
Yeah.
Well, I think, uh, my understanding is, I think Roger's right, we can't, we can't zone them, we can't eliminate them entirely, but we can, we can, just like the Marsh Town ordinance, it's a good ordinance from what I've been able to read over it.
Yeah.
I, I think we can...
The planner from Marsh Town told me that, uh, there's a specific word they use in there, which is like, we suggest that you provide three applications and let us pick better, or that, uh, you utilize a tower that already has spaces available, like the first prime tower that's behind Cock County, uh, Blue Joe on that hill.
Okay.
Uh, that has five open spaces for Verizon to be able to locate them, and we could request they consider that, the way I understand the Forest Town Planner Assistant, what I was telling them, but, uh, I don't talk through that, there was a spec, there was a very specific word about, uh, advising and, and recommending, and it's sort of like in the building, Kevin says, you shall, or you should, if it's you should, then, uh, it would be nice for them to build, uh, the way it's being recommended, shall means it will be built that way.
Mark?
So, if, uh, you know, what I've read on this particular handout here, looks, uh, very good potential ordinance for us to, uh, recommend to the planning, to the council.
Yes, I don't understand, I was at the planning commission meeting, but I don't understand why they came to the planning commission to begin with, and why they wanted to take a vote from a planning commission if we had no authority over where they located.
There's a reason for that in our zoning ordinance, under, uh, the exceptions and modifications, refers to, uh, let's see, exemptions and height limitations, the height limitations of this ordinance should not apply to any structure not intended for human occupancy, including to, including but not limited to, turbaspired, valfries, cupolas, domes and chimneys attached to residential structures, such structures including but not limited to monuments, water towers, observation towers, transmission towers, so on and so forth, radio towers, masts and aerials shall be reviewed by the planning commission prior to construction, and that's where the site plan, uh, regulations that we have would come into play.
So we could review it, but they had, did they, did the planning commission vote on it?
Yes.
You know, it looked like you have authority to vote, you can vote no, what, what would have happened if we voted no?
Terry said he would prepare something for us to look at at the next council meeting, if y'all would like to...
Be there.
Y'all rest together.
On this.
He said he would put something together for us to look at for possibility of approval.
That is.
Okay.
I think in this situation, a lot of things we deal with, if you don't have written rules and guidelines, people will try to take advantage of it.
I think that's.
Down in black and white, it makes that a little more different.
Oh, yeah.
Authority been built, people, before you know it, they're there.
Yeah.
I think that's where we are on the one in, did it come before the Planning Commission?
Yes.
The one in, out near the cross street, I'll just call it cross street from Sonic, for lack of a better term. It did come before the Planning Commission?
That was a read back in March.
That's like, what they need to do. Okay, we'll have something ready to look at at the November meeting. Okay, the new item that y'all approved was to look at the tax payments. We have a motion to approve that, then have some kind of standard to go by at the November meeting, just to approve the process.
I'll make the motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll check.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Under item 10A, consideration proposal of administration services for the 2012-13 home project.
Mayor, what happened on this? We had, we were ready to take bids on the project, and the, the person that was administering that for us under Evan, through Evan Sanders' group down there, had a personal issue that come up that they were unable to fulfill their obligation, and so Evan has asked that we redo that so he can start that process over. I don't, I don't know exactly why we have to do that, but he's, Evan has requested that we just start the process over, just to alleviate any kind of problems that were created by the incident that, that other, the other person had.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no?
No.
Got one no. Item B is consideration of bids for the construction of the RTP Parks and Float Project. Tim, what do you think, buddy?
We bid it three times, and this is the best bid that we've got, which is around $73,000, which is the amount of money that we had to discuss it, and now we're ready to win that bid.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Tim's recommendation. What's it, is it RTP?
I mean, the. Generation Trailstone Park and Float.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the final, 96, 557?
Andrew's Construction.
90,000.
Yeah, turned in 90,000.
$176,000.
So it was the lower bid.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's one you liked, Tim?
Andrew. Do we have a motion to approve that bid?
I'll make the motion to approve the bid.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Comments from citizens? Do we have a motion adjourned?
I have a question, on behalf of the Library Board, Stokely Memorial Library, are we the city in charge of the maintenance of that building? We have, who is?
The library, I don't, I'm not saying the D, but the library is its own entity. We make an annual donation to them to assist with their budget, but we have, we have no ownership there or.
Stokely Foundation still have something to do with that, because I know when they were talking about trying to move it, they were trying to get another one, the Stokely Foundation had something to do with it at that time.
I think it's held in some kind of a.
Trust.
Trust like that, yeah. The county, I'm, I'm pretty confident the county doesn't own it, I know the city doesn't own it, and so I think it's just in its own trust.
We've got some rotting gables on either side, and we need in the basest rates, some awnings guttering down the, we need eight sets of guttering because water's coming down the hill into the building, and I think Ben or somebody in this crew went over and took a look.
Ben and I went over.
Yeah, and you said that as well, quick fix is some guttering.
Yeah, yes.
So that is a Library Board issue, that's a library issue, not the city or county.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that him?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do we have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion adjourned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Can you hear anybody?